So, some tokens there. And then, they just see one way out of the file, but they actually, they didn't. He didn't. So, they started to go, it's always, I'm having, instead of, yeah, I didn't catch it. And so, if they could see my play, it's down there. Yeah. I guess. But, yeah, as long as you have to help them, yeah, you know, while it's not, you're not in front of this, as long as you get the space. You got a big, and I put off, I heard it here, kind of saw power. Yeah. Yeah. A lot of this is color, but it can't go anywhere.
Emily's gonna put a face in the voice. Who else has that on here? Rachel, that was my speech, yeah. For us. Okay.
After, we'll have a new presentation, we'll invite, um, the guests. And if that copies of all your children.
Okay, thank you. Some of us doing that. So.
Do you want any suggestions or is this all work for you?
I'm fine. Well, now, see, it's something like what we anticipated.
That is, yeah.
Emily? Six o'clock? Is it recording? Okay. Good evening, welcome to the zoning board of appeals. We have a few cases coming up this evening. We have one item on the agenda that has been taken off. That is the number five, case number Z twenty-one dash forty-three. So, if you're here for the, for that case, then that will not coming, will not be presented tonight. That has been pulled. As we present our cases, each case will come up the podium and speak. The staff will give the presentation first. And then, the applicant will have a time, a chance to, to speak on behalf of the request. They will open it up for public hearing. And the application, applicant may come back after any public hearing comments. We'll close the case, close the public hearing, and then vote on, on the request. When you come up to the podium, you know, please speak into the microphone. This is being recorded, but also goes through the mo, through the speakers so that we can hear you. And if you are in the audience, retain, please refrain from speaking while we're in here. If you need to speak with someone, please exit the room and then you can come back. All right, so, first item on the agenda is the minute approval from last month. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review the minutes, and do you see any corrections or changes that need to be made?
I need to turn.
Second? All in favor, are you in comments? No comments? Okay, I did. All right, so, any discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes as written? Raise your right hand. Thank you. All unanimous? New business, we have consideration, consider nominations and election of zoning board of appeal chairman. So, do we have any nominations for the chairman? I'd like to nominate Jeff Hunter. We have a nomination and a second. Any discussion? Any other nominations besides Jeff? Okay. See none, all in favor of Jeff being the chairman? Raise your right hand. All opposed? Any abstentions?
I didn't raise my hand. I raised my hand. Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm sure you can do a fine job. Consider nominations for the vice chairman. Any nominations?
I nominate Derek.
We have a nomination for Derek, and a second. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor of Derek's chair, vice chair? Raise your right hand. Thank you. All right. Moving along, our first case this evening, Z twenty-two dash one, Paul Moody. And staff presentation, please.
All right. Good evening. Marion Rae with York County zoning. First case tonight is Z twenty-two dash one. You might have noticed they have tweaked the mic a little bit, so hopefully, I'm a little louder and easier to hear. Our variance request tonight, you have seen it before. It was from December of twenty nineteen. They were denied a variance at the time, and they were sent to mediation. As a result of mediation, they were allowed to come back to the ZBA and present. The property location is at four thirty-three Swift Creek Cove in the Clover community. It's zoned RD two, and they're requesting a front setback variance. Here, you can see the zoning map. It is RD two, they are surrounded by RD two. This is just south of Lake Wiley Drive, and that is Lake Wiley there in the blue. Here on the aerial, you can see that they are near the top of their section of the subdivision. It is an extension from another subdivision. That's the amenity area to the rear across little inlet, and you can see the rest of the subdivision. It really started developing two thousand eight, two thousand twelve or so. This is a later build. And here, you can see the sealed foundation survey that was performed. The red line is basically where the setback is. You can see that portion of the garage intrudes into the setback by ten point one feet, so they require fourteen point nine foot setback variance. And I've had some aerials taken from our guys. Here, you can see from above, basically, and you can see the water in the background there is that inlet and the trees. This is the backyard. That first little line that you see is the landscape edging, and you can see down below it is a kind of a rip, not rip rap, I'm sorry, stormwater silt fence. The land does slope off behind the home. And here's directly from above, you can see it's close to the road there, and you can see the little bit of the drop-off to the rear of the house. And from the side here, that is the front yard, and you can see the slope down from the road to the front of the house. So, we're gonna go through the approval criteria. The first thing is there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property. So, lot forty-nine is nearly an acre in size, allowing the construction of a home meeting covenant standards. Their HOA covenant standards require thirty-four hundred heated square feet minimum for a two-story home. So, despite the large wetland to the rear, they do have space to put a home on the lot. These same covenants do not have a minimum garage requirement. They are putting a three-car garage on, it's not required to have a three-car garage. So, therefore, staff finds proposed variance does not meet this standard. And since it didn't meet A, it does not meet B. And because of these conditions, the application of this chapter to the particular piece of property would effectively prohibit or unreasonably restrict the utilization of the property. So, due to the lack of garage size minimum required by York County or their HOA, the existing garage could be reduced in size to meet required setbacks. So, staff finds the proposed variance does not meet this standard. The authorization of a variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property or to the public good, and the character of the district will not be harmed by the granting of the variance. Unfortunately, the purpose of setbacks is to create a uniform, consistent look for the neighborhood, and this site is located at the top of their section of the neighborhood. It's one of the first homes you see. And it causes an immediate disruption in the image of the community for anybody who enters. The encroachment into the twenty-five-foot front yard setback for a three-car garage is detrimental to adjacent properties that already legally comply with the required setback. So, therefore, staff finds that a variance does not meet this criteria. So, staff recommends denial based on the findings that the proposed variance does not meet all four criteria. And then, we have an applicant presentation, and we have the attorney here for the client to do the presentation, and I'm sure the applicant has some of their presentation items also. Yes.
Are there, it seems to me, there remember there were other, there were a couple of other situations where.
In the neighborhood.
Neighborhood where we had a similar.
Yes, there was one variance that was denied in twenty seventeen for a property owner. I wrote down the address. On Highland, five forty Highland Ridge Point, and they requested a variance in twenty seventeen and were denied, and they did remove the part of the structure that encroached. There was another home, I believe about two doors down from that one, that they did not, they proposed it, and it was starting to be built. We caught it. They removed that section of the home that encroached.
The first time that you mentioned, was that, I can't hear you.
The first house that you mentioned, was that completely built, or was that in, in the midst of construction?
It was completely built.
Okay.
Are all these same builder?
I can't hear. Uh, no, different builders.
So, the Z nineteen forty-five variance, I was here and I honestly don't even remember it. Was it the same purpose for the variance for the, for that front setback?
Yes, same setback variance.
So, if, if this has been going on for three years, I mean, it's been going on since twenty nineteen.
Mm-hmm.
How is it that, since it's not able to pass final inspection, how is it that the owners of the property have been given, well, apparently, the builder was given a certificate of occupancy, that people have moved in?
They don't have a certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
They have a TCO, temporary certificate? Have nothing.
Nothing.
So, the packet says that when a building permit was given to the, to the builder, three days later, they called for the plumbing inspection.
Right, under slap.
Is that some kind of miracle building where you can have a plum, everything done up to plumbing in three days?
Um, I believe it was the grading, and then what, the only part they were doing was the basement foundation at that point, and they had a prefab foundation wall system. So, they, apparently, they were able to move it pretty quickly, but it was three days after the initial permit. And at that time, we requested a sealed foundation survey, because the builder, the inspector noticed it's pretty close. But the garage at that time was not built. That was a different foundation.
So, I'm trying to go off memory, so I might ask a couple, I might ask at least one more question. Did the plan change between the initial review? Had it always, were plans always a three-car garage?
The plan was for a three-car garage. The submitted plan showed the correct setback, but it was not built in the same area that was shown on the plans.
Okay, so the plans didn't change, it was the.
Location.
The location did.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
We have it in here, and it's, you don't have to point any particular thing, and then the laser is the green on top.
Okay, the laser's the green, and that moves it? Okay. May I re, remove my mask? Is that okay?
Yes. Name and address, please.
My name's Zach Merritt. My address is one zero seven Bratton Avenue, York, South Carolina. I represent Bill Boer, and I represent Paul Moody in this request for a variance. So, we would like to start with being grateful for the opportunity to request this variance before the board. Particularly, would like to thank the mediation process. So, in this case, Mr. Moody and Mr. Boer initially presented their variance application, stating grounds that necessarily tried to address the four factors that hopefully will convince you to give them this variance. During the mediation process, I do believe they took into account several things that, that were not presented after reviewing the transcript, and gave us the opportunity, even though they probably didn't need to, on the appellate side of it, on the appellate side of it, there's not a lot of legal action that somebody who's denied a variance can take. So, we are grateful for the opportunity to, to resubmit. So, first, we would like to discuss the community support that you should have received approximately fifteen letters of support from various members of the community. Most of those people who support this are na, are residents of Sunset Ridge, retreat at Sunset Ridge. You'll also have a letter from the developer and from the HOA. You've got also support from the direct neighbors on the two lots adjoining the property and the property across the street. So, we're gonna go over briefly why we're in this unique situation. I'm gonna go through these bullet points. Feel free to interrupt me at any time, and we'll try to address your concerns. I do, you know, why we're here now and the procedural posture that we're here, which is apparently unique, is, is something I would like to compartmentalize. A lot of that we did deal with in the mediation process. We have tried to resubmit our application in a vacuum, as though this house had never been built, attempting to demonstrate that the unique and extraordinary aspects of this property made this variance request reasonable from, from the start. But we do wanna go ahead and discuss this, and, and like I said, if y'all've got some questions about it, we'll try to answer them. There are some gray facts, some facts that are uncertain, there's some things that are certain. However, Paul Moody and Bill Boer contracted together to build a home in January, that it started building in January of two thousand nineteen. The home, unlike a lot of the homes in the neighborhood, was built by a custom home builder, because Mr. Boer's family is a, is a mixed family with very special and specific needs. You'll learn a little bit about those when Mr. Boer discusses his family, and I'll allude to it. Four thirty-three Swift Cove, in our view, is a unique and extraordinary property in this subdivision. It's got wetlands, it's got a creek that feeds into Lake Wiley, but something that was not too clear from the picture that was given of the map of the property earlier, is it has a substantial dip in the middle of the property, and it also has a dehex silt fence covering, right at about, making about two-thirds of the property untouchable, cannot build on whatsoever. If you were to see the map that was provided earlier that shows just where the hundred-year floodplain is, it would, it would appear as though there's about two-thirds of the property to build on. What we're hoping to provide today is a little bit of evidence that gives you an on-the-ground view, evidence that you did not have the opportunity to look at the first time, and evidence that demonstrates how difficult of a build this is. We understand that we're doing this backwards from where it typically is done. That was not intentional. My client and both of my clients have great respect for the zoning laws, and this has been something they've lived with, with a lot of anxiety. It's a very personal problem for them. However, when we discuss some of the problems that are going to occur as a collateral consequence of a potential denial of this variance, we're only discussing it because in our view, it's an, it's anecdotal evidence of why the variance was needed. What happened here in this case is demonstrative of why we're requesting the variance. So, the home was positioned close to the drop-off that we'll show you without jeopardizing the Lake Wiley ecology. Portions of the garage, the bonus room, above cross the setback from different ranges from eight point five to ten point one feet, which we understand is a substantial request. The foundation footer inspection, we believe, would have found this issue, but because a precast concrete foundation system was utilized in this home, as it's a custom home, and as the contractor decided to use this particular precast system in this case, no footer inspection appears was conducted early on. So, it is a mystery as to how the electricity is on in the house, for example. It's a mystery as to how they're in the house, and it would be difficult to overcome the situation if we didn't have it, but at the end of the day, it's not really a blame game. The fault, at the end of the day, is on us, but we did want to note that there were some other factors. It was kind of a perfect storm of people not telling each other what was going on. One of the aspects of that storm is the precast system. The precast system, once again, had its own engineer that produced a report, we believe, to the county, that, and that may be the reason why they're only told that the foundation does not pass inspection until October, when the house is built. Doesn't take away our responsibility to have figured that out ourselves, but that's what happened. On December twelfth, two thousand nineteen, the zoning board appeals denied setback variance request unless the variance is approved, the front portion of the home will have to be torn down. This would be a costly endeavor. We estimate the cost to be between one thirty and one forty-five thousand, and that's not just to destroy the current garage, that's also to build a garage that, once again, meets the requirements of this family on the property, if it can be done. So, let's get into it a little bit. So, this is an overview of the entire neighborhood, and to discuss a little bit the unique and extraordinary aspects of the lot. This lot, as you can see, is set apart a little bit, it's at the front of the neighborhood. You'll also see the Lake Wiley, y'all know where Lake Wiley is, but it's down there. And on this side, these lots have significant environmental concerns. They have flood, the hundred-year floodline, there's a creek on his property. On the other hand, and, and it could be looked at two ways, the two adjoining lots currently don't have, are not built on. One of those lots has comparable concerns, the other one probably could be built on. Both of those neighbors are in support of our request, but at the, at the end of the day, it is, as of now, standing there by itself. This is probably the image that we believe to be pretty important. It's the exact same image y'all saw earlier, but it includes the silt fence. So, as y'all know, the dehex silt fence is basically placed there by the county. The silt fence prevents, the construction is not allowed to go through it to prevent runoff from destroying the ecology of, of this particular lot, and, and that's what we were just hoping to demonstrate, that it's not the floodplain line that's our building space. Our building space is very much the silt fence. And while this is an attempt to demonstrate where the silt fence is, in reality, and you'll see from some of our pictures, it, it's much closer. You know, what I've learned from the case is you can't build a house on a cliff. You need to also have room behind the house, that has to also not impede on the silt fence to which, to get machinery behind there, to get scaffolding behind there and to build the house. At this time, I am gonna have Mr. Moody, the builder, describe some of the difficulties on this property in regards to the building, and then I'll come back.
Good afternoon. I'm Paul Moody. My address now is two three six nine Holly Road, Clover, South Carolina. I do, wanna start with my support of zoning ordinances and setbacks. I genuinely regret how we got to this situation and have rattled through my head time and time again how we can get to this point and, and not, and here we are, in here having this meeting. But I do wanna start in the beginning and kinda walk through this, this story with you of, when Mr. Bill Boer and I had met, our goal was to find a lane, a plan that would fit on lot forty-nine and meet the HOA requirements and meet his very specific family needs. As we're looking at lot forty-nine, it is a rather narrow lot, which did squeeze our neighborhood requirements of three thousand four hundred square feet, very, to a very long, narrow home. And then also, the H, the covenants had stated that they needed side entry garages. This put that left side, as you're looking at it from here, at an, our average is thirty feet to be able to back out of a garage or swing into a garage. As you can see, there's twenty-nine point two. We pushed it as close as we felt we could to get sufficient room for him, and we stretched it the whole way down that side. The right side falls off far worse than that left side, but we thought that we had a plan that fit on this lot when you're looking at the side setbacks, the front setback, and the hundred-year floodplain, giving it a large buffer there. Then we, so we turn in our building permit. There is a prerequisite to the permit. Everything can pass on a building permit except for the environmental section, which is stormwater swift, MPDES, several names for that. But that is where an engineer that works with the county draws up from the contour lines, where he feels that a house can be built without damaging any of the surrounding areas, the lowlands. He turns it into the county, they have it for a week to two, it goes to the state dehex. Once it's approved by both the county and the state, that drawing comes back and they meet us on site. There is an onsite drawing where they tell us where to put the silt fence, the driveway, the washout, everything for the permit. Then, we're not allowed to touch any trees on site, we have to put the silt fence around, and we basically come back and meet with them again. They verify that this is where the silt fence is supposed to be, which, as you can see, is on the edge, so it makes sense where they're placing it. And then they, they sign off and let us begin to build. This is where, and rattling it through our head and walking back and forth, the, the, I keep looking at it as a toothpaste, like, it's just squeezing us up and the house got skinny, and this line is where it pushed our house into that setback. Now, how do we get there? How do we not catch it is the next question in my head. This is where, when we had decided to use a engineered, precast basement system. they designed it on paper eight weeks ahead of time. They come in, to your question, is very fast procedure. Your grader will clear the land that he's allowed to touch within that silt fence. He can't even have stuff on the silt fence or we have to go clear within 10 feet of it, right? But then they come in and set it up within three hours. They set the basement and they have their own engineer because there's not traditional footers. There's no concrete underneath this structure that signs off on the footer, the placement, the, basically saying that this structure will support the house in the design. This is where I can get to in my head of, we got pushed up and that silt fence was not where we thought it would be. We get to the front and then there was no stakes, there's no pins in the concrete for brick mason. That is all where my surveyor catches me. And I don't do a house now without two surveys. I mean, it's just, it is something you never want to deal with again. But, we did get to this point and that is where, I at least wanted to give you a little story of how we, time and time through my head, how we got to this point. Got every inspection passed, power on. It is something we're trying to, we have constantly tried to figure out, to me and the homeowner. But I do want to just thank you for the opportunity to be able to come in with the information we can get and be able to explain our side of the story. Thank you.
Can I ask you a couple of questions? Yes. So, listening to that story, it sounds like you had an approved SWIP plan from the county that showed the house outside the setback. You would have had an approved plot plan to go with your building permit that showed the house out of the setback that the county approved. I would assume and that you had your surveyor come and stake the foundation for them to install the precast walls. Somebody had to show that person where that wall was supposed to go per the plot plan, irrespective of where the silt fence was shown on the SWIP. How was that wall staked?
How was the basement staked?
Yeah. The surveyor, typically a surveyor would come out there and put the batter boards up, even if it's a pre-manufactured basement wall system. They typically stake that based on the plot plan, which would have allowed the garage to be outside of the setback. How did it get shifted? Did the surveyor shift it forward? How was that done? I mean, was it a tape?
A surveyor would tell us.
It's kind of unusual here.
He would tell us and he does to this day. There's a hundred foot easement, you know, anything. He'll say, Paul, you're close to this. We got to move. He, the surveyor will not typically let it be in a setback when he starts.
So, he would have staked the precast foundation system where it showed on the plot plan, which would have allowed the garage to be outside of the setback.
And we were and are fairly new to these systems. We do not use them anymore because of this. But it is, it may be a miscommunication, but they have someone that comes out. Well, even the Ford basements that checks, right? They have somebody that comes out and lays their basement out. That is, this is the reason that we got by it, whereas normally I have to have a surveyor to even dig a footer.
So, if you didn't use a surveyor, how did the folks that installed the system know where to put their first corner? Somebody has to tell them. I've done some of these.
No, no, I understand, I understand. So, they, yeah. It got placed in three hours. You're absolutely right. Our main thing is, there's a hole dug to the back of that fence and as we're watching the crane drop everything, that our, my understanding was they had somebody that checks it. You're right. How far it is off the property line is the part where I should have been verifying with a surveyor.
So, that gets a little deeper in, whether you were responsible for staking that foundation for them to install it, or they should have staked that foundation. But it should have been installed per the plot plan.
Ultimately, this is, and this is why I have several, not inspections, surveyors. Yeah, I totally agree with that scenario of trusting a basement crew to care where your property line is.
So, let me ask one question. In our package from the county, it says that after you got your original build permit, three days later, you requested the under the slab plumbing inspection. And it says at that time that the plumbing under the slab inspection prompted the request for a sealed foundation survey. And it should be noted that at that time, that was during construction of the basement, the garage had not been started yet. But, at that point, not only are you in charge of the construction, but now you had this foundation survey, it should give you a very good idea of how far you are from the setback at that point with just the home construction before the garage construction even began. So, I'm at a total loss as, I mean, I hear you say we didn't really know because the precast foundation was coming and they laid it. But, if you know that you're 30 feet from the line now with just the home, simple math tells you, if five more feet on that garage, now you're in trouble. I don't see how you couldn't have caught it. And actually, in the application, which you listed as the applicant, I believe Mr. Boer signed it. But, one of the statements in here says more of the applicant and the homeowner were unaware of the defect until after the build was complete. I'm really having a hard time understanding how you could be off 14 feet and not see it.
So, I had not seen a foundation survey. I guess you were stating that we had one of the house. I had not even had a foundation survey in any of the homes short of a lender maybe at the end. This is a tight neighborhood where I think that finding out now that they-
The county requested the foundation survey. It wasn't provided to the county?
So, we, one of the issues we have been trying to chase down is that communication that you're discussing. The only indication that we see of a January request for the foundation survey is in those notes that we provided. But, he generally receives his communications regarding inspections through emails. We've asked for that email communication. Where did this request for a foundation survey? Where did that occur? We wanted to see it so we knew to what extent we are following our sword here. To which, we are. That's what we're doing to some extent. But, we have been asking for that for a while. I presented that, we did it very candidly. We presented that timeline as part of our documentation. But that timeline is something that we saw in mediation. That the way that he generally receives, and you correct me if I'm wrong, communications regarding anything about inspection. So, that first inspection entry, and if there's somewhere else you're getting that information, it would be news to us and we want to know. But the only time that we, the first time we saw a January request for that foundation survey was just in those notes. At the end of the day, we still have not gotten an answer to, please send us this communication, please send us this email where he did receive notice that he needed to get that foundation survey. And we have not gotten an answer. And that, we failed. But, in our view, there's a little, it goes back to that perfect storm. Use of that, that particular foundation system was an issue, but there may have been some issues on the inspection side. No matter what, doesn't take away from the fact that we got issues and we got problems. But, once again, if there's something else that you're getting the January request for the foundation survey, that's all, that's the only place we've ever seen.
I have a tough time with the special foundation. You have a plot plan that shows the perimeter of the house. I don't care if that's a prefab foundation or CMU block wall or whatever the case may be. You have the plot plan with the perimeter. That doesn't change irrespective of foundation style or design.
Yeah, the only reason I think that we brought up that foundation style was because it's my understanding that instead of the county maybe coming out at that point, an engineer from the folks that do the precast foundation sends a letter to the county. And we are only saying that candidly is one of the reasons why this might have been overlooked by the other stakeholders. We overlooked it too. But all the stakeholders did clearly overlook it because we have a full house that's built and they're moving into in October before we're told about a foundation, which typically, y'all would know better than I do, but typically comes early.
And we did pull a foundation survey as soon as we realized we weren't getting the paperwork for a CO. Because it was told to us verbally and it's common at the end of a build, the homeowner's there, inspector's coming verbally telling us everything's approved. They're excited. For weeks, we were trying to get the paperwork. That was when, where's the foundation survey comes up? We hire somebody to get a survey. He calls me up and says, Paul, you need to come here.
So, are you saying that you were never made aware that on January 10th, when they did the rough plumbing, that you needed a silt foundation survey?
I was not aware.
Things have changed since 2019. I'll give them that. I just, currently when, correct. Currently, to avoid situations like this, when the inspector requests a sealed foundation survey, it's done until we have one in our office. Fortunately, I have our thing up and I brought this. Email was sent to pmoody@contractor.net on January 10th of 2019 at 4:26 PM and 25 seconds for the plumbing underslab. And it says, comment one, need foundation survey from Josh Gordon. So, and I can provide that to you if you'd like it for me to.
Does it say past or not?
It says, inspection plumbing underslab, status not approved. Comment one, need foundation survey. Zero fee charged. To schedule a reinspection, please call customer service at 803-909-7200. And I'll certainly be happy to provide this if y'all would like, so.
We would like a copy of it, just because I haven't asked for it for a while. But I have been doing it, I guess indirectly. So, once again, that's why we're here, all right? So, the goal here is to try to discuss, in a vacuum, this house doesn't exist, okay? Would the request for the variance be granted? And so, that's what we're attempting to do here. One thing that, there's no doubt about, is the first time this was presented to y'all, it did appear that line where the silt fence was, was not there, okay? It did appear like there was two thirds of the property to build this home on. Three cars, it may not be a covenant. There are some covenants that were discussed by Paul that we're going to talk about because I think the hardest guideline to get past is C, right? C is the one that basically tells us the restrictions on this property are so severe that we can, it unreasonably restricts the use of the property, right? And to grant the variance, you'd have to grant the variance or it'll unreasonably restrict the use because generally the law just favors variances. So, with that in mind, we're trying to think of all the restrictions that exist on this property that limit the ability to build it and to build a property that actually fits the character of this neighborhood. So, that silt fence, that is new information. You got information about what happened in the past and the procedural history, but that is also new and that was not before y'all last time. Other things, y'all just, y'all asked these questions specifically last time. You didn't get answers to them. There's a, you now know it's a 4,600, 3,400 square foot minimum requirement. I believe Mr. Blair actually asked that question last time and they didn't, you didn't get an answer on that. That's a significant requirement. The fact that the garage has to be a side entry garage that does not face the street, that's another restriction that is on the property. Obviously, the setbacks are restriction and then these environmental restrictions. To help also continue to convey, and hopefully y'all can see a better picture of this than the here, on the left is the scaffolding on the back of that house. I made the comment earlier, I learned from this case, you can't build a house on a cliff. Well, that house is pushed all the way back on, and that, the narrowness of that scaffolding is the amount of space they have to work on the back of the house. The silt fence is right on the edge of that picture. The left part of that scaffolding is on a straight, completely straight ground. The right part of it, you'll see there's wood and stuff like that that's trying to push up against it because the property has got this severe drop off. The other thing I'm trying to convey, the other thing that makes this property unique and makes the difficulty of this build kind of inherent, is this drop off. So, you didn't have any information about that last time. This time, you can see this picture is from the bottom of the drop off on that property. At the very top, you can see the silt fence rearing it ahead there. And that kind of demonstrates the depth of the drop off. This is a picture of the drop off view from the first floor of the property. Once again, the picture itself, some is proportionate to the building space. You see the environmental kind of concerns. You see the creek right there that feeds in the Lake Wiley. You see all of that marshland, then you see that prominent silt fence that's supposed to protect the runoff from going into that area. The picture is also attempting to try to convey that drop off. The buildable space was completely utilized. One thing in regards to the three garages, the three car garage fits the specific needs of this family. And I understand that, once again, this is anecdotal evidence of how the limited space prevented us from building a home that fit this family as it could have any family. So, Mr. Boer, his wife and his sister are all retired professionals. They, it's, I'm sorry, it's Mr. Boer and his wife and his wife's sister. His wife's sister lives, part of her living space is above that garage. They also have two adult children that live in the home that suffer from cerebral palsy. Cerebral palsy has got this wide range of how it affects people. And for some people, it's debilitating. You can't drive or you can't do anything. For Mr. Boer's family, for the two, for the son and the daughter, they are able to drive, but they have severe mobility issues, which is something that we'll get into just a little bit when Mr. Boer introduces that. The three car garage is inherent, it's, luckily, they can drive. They can get wherever they want to go, no problem. The scariest and most concerning part of their day is leaving their car and going into wherever they're trying to go. So, believe it or not, the covered garage for this family means something much different for them than it would for me. I believe we're one of the busier firms in the county and very early on in this case, it kept popping up and I was kind of curious why we were so concerned about a three car garage. But when I got to, when I got to know Mr. Boer and I got to know his family, it became a case that I can't stop thinking about. I know they're in a difficult position, but I also know having another close family member who deals with cerebral palsy, I know that this is very near and dear to their hearts. However, the three car garage is also, for the most part, completely fitting the character of the neighborhood. The vast majority of the homes in this neighborhood do have a three car garage. The HOA indicates that the character of the neighborhood is preserved by this variance request, which is really just about the third car garage. So, I do think the fact that it's a three car garage is relevant outside of the effect it has on Mr. Boer. It is relevant because it does, once again, is in uniform with the rest of the neighborhood. You will see, these pictures continue to try to show this drop off and how this house essentially kind of creeps into the abyss of the drop off. You'll bear with me for just one second. Well, the numbers are off because I guess the, y'all's slides probably pushed the numbers off a little bit. But anyway, one of the things that this is trying to demonstrate is that, you know, the difficulty, well, one, you've got the, that's where the garage will eventually be. So, you need about 30 feet for that car to turn around because it can't be, once again, the covenant's the neighborhood. It cannot be a front facing garage. So, you need about 30 feet for the car to turn into that garage. This is 29, probably 0.2 feet. It's exactly the bare minimum to be able to fit that requirement. And this is trying to demonstrate that. All right, once again, and we'll just go to this one. This is trying to demonstrate how difficult, as you can see, that's that big drop off on the right side of the property in the picture of the left. These are areas where you have to get equipment through various times. That scaffolding, very difficult to fit in there. Once again, there's virtually no space behind the house. The bare minimum amount is pushed all the way against that silt fence.
You may want to go back a slide?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Oh yeah. So the left side, so you saw the right side of the property a second ago. On the left side of the property, once again, I mean, they built this virtually on the one mound of foundation that they possibly could, could have. Once again, to fit, uh, the general character of the neighborhood. And this is the completed home. And at this time I was going to introduce Mr. Boar and he was going to discuss with y'all some of the issues hopefully y'all find relevant in this case. Okay.
Mr. Boar.
The Moody observations? Oh yeah. And I don't know if y'all have had time to review this. You know, Paul came up here earlier to discuss this, but this was our attempt to also give you a written statement. These are Paul's words too. About how this came to be, you know, I generally support the need for the zoning ordinance and didn't build across the setback intentionally. My goal was to position the foundation on solid unfilled ground. Both the subdivision developer and the HOA appreciate the quality and value of the home and regard it as an excellent addition to the community. They support this variance to allow the structure to remain as is. The neighbors in the subdivision also support leaving the home as it is for the most part. In October, 2019, verbal approval was given for a certificate of occupancy. After these flaws were addressed, um, that's, some of that is still a mystery to us. We needed to adjust this silt fence, finish the grading around the sidewalks, cover some insulation around the basement stairwell and add a lock of elevator to the elevator door. Removing one third of the garage would be a significant financial hardship. An unwise use of resources and power, manpower. Current placement isn't harmful or unsafe. The home position balances the goals of setback, security, privacy and the environment. And that's also supported by the HFA president. Um, they looked at the home. It's the only, I mean, another thing in the perfect storm is the why this happened. It's right by itself. There's no neighbors, obviously. If there were neighbors, that encroachment on the setback would be incredibly obvious. But the other good thing about that is makes it safe. It, from a bird's eye view, it looks, uh, it's very evident to any driver, um, that comes across it. At the end of the day, uh, you can look at the adjoining properties two ways. One way to look at it is that these guys are going to ask for setback, uh, variances too, and we're going to grant them. Well, that's not necessarily true. One of the properties we do believe, um, after discussing it with the property owner, there's a chance it could be built on successfully. The one other adjoining property probably has some of the same problems we do, but there's 59 lots in this neighborhood. And for the most part, um, the, the, the lots do not have the significant environmental problems that this one does. And understand that we've talked about one other comparable lot. Um, that lot we'll probably end up discussing more about later. Um, but anyway, so current placement isn't harmful or unsafe as we just talked about. And Paul reiterated, he made a mistake. He regrets it. Um, and hopefully you have the authority and the compassion to help us address this issue. At this time, like we talked to, please listen to Mr. Boar.
Thank you, Zach. My name is Bill Boar and I do live at four 33 Swift Creek Cove. And I again want to mention how much we appreciate.
You know, it's just.
It's the forward arrow. The, um, the, the gratitude that I have for you folks, uh, sharing with us in the mediation, what you really need to focus on in this application was very meaningful to us. So again, thank you for the opportunity to represent hopefully a, a lucid argument. So my goal here is just to maybe go beyond the facts and figures argument and talk a little bit about compassion and offer up a heartfelt plea for consideration here. So as was explained, uh, I have basically a group home. We, we live together with a couple of generations. Myself, my wife, my wife's sister, who has now been locked down for COVID because her granddaughter exposed her, otherwise she'd be here. Uh, and then of course, uh, our two adult children, one of whom is here and the other is, um, actually had to stay home and hopefully joined us by Zoom. I don't know if that's, uh, if that's working, but, um, he suffers from IBS as well as his other mobility problems and he just declined to come because he's having issues. So, uh, the three car garage, as was mentioned, that's a standard for the subdivision and it is critical to us because of our ages. You know, I'm 75. My wife is a couple of years younger. Her sister is a couple of years younger. And we're in, uh, you know, our senior years and having access to the, the three car garage is really important to us. You know the rest of this story in that first paragraph. Cause Zach shared it earlier. This house was really designed with our conditions, our situations in mind. We looked at several other possible builds. And, uh, you know, because we have a need for four bedrooms and, and four bathrooms, we can't have a, like a Jack and Jill bath between two bedrooms. Many of the houses we looked at, we just had to rule out. But Paul did an excellent job of designing the home for us, even to the extent of, um, an elevator so that we can move up and down with, uh, adequate mobility. Uh, and we have what we call the handyman bathroom in the garage. Oftentimes when Ben gets home, drives in, he needs to rush into the bathroom right now. And, uh, that was his idea and it worked out really well for a half bath to be positioned in the bathroom, in the, in the garage rather. So, um, the design of the house was intended to meet our requirements as far as disabilities and, and retirement. And, uh, it truly does represent our life savings as well as a legacy for the children after we're gone. So that, uh, it's all part of the, the plan that the Lord had in mind for us. I was there when the building inspector came through with the final inspection and said, you know, as long as Paul takes care of these silt fence things and the insulation that's exposed, we're good to go. And as a result, we moved in on Halloween, like four days later. We never really got the information that we were not supposed to move in until December or whenever the notice came to us. Nonetheless, I think Zach's already explained, there was sort of this assumptive, uh, checklist that everything was progressed or had progressed as normal. We had power, we were raring to go and, uh, so long as we fixed those things, we were good. They were fixed and, and we moved in. There's been a lot of disruption that all of us have experienced as a result of the, the COVID situation. We've, uh, wrung our hands, I guess, uh, hopefully trying to be patient and listen to, uh, God's direction for us for the last couple of years, but you know, I've got, I have to say that it's been a hardship already. I'd, I'd like to put some drywall into that bonus room and finish it off. I'd like to do some plantings around the garage and landscaping and so on. My garage is, is just a total mess because I've got moving boxes of, of tools and things that I want to use, but I don't know where they are. So, um, we've had a couple of years of stressful uncertainty. Again, uh, I think you can recognize from my perspective that the permanent loss of this three car garage and the bonus room above it would be a true hardship to our family. Plus that when the deconstruction and reconstruction would take place, I don't know how the kids would get into the house. There's a huge drop off on the driveway. The ramp down is, is bad and we have steps, but you can't navigate them, uh, with a walker. So that, that would represent a significant hardship. Just to share a little personal backstory here, I was diagnosed with leukemia in 21, January. Fortunately, I'm blessed because, uh, the folks at Levine have done a great job for me and, um, they're helping me and, uh, but I just have this gnawing anxiety that I need to get my affairs in order. I don't want to leave my family in a lurch with, uh, without an occupancy permit in a, uh, house that, uh, will be saleable. So again, um, we definitely respect your requests and your judgment, but we would ask more for benevolence than justice in this case. Mercy perhaps, uh, as you, as you deeply, you know, as you thoughtfully consider what we're asking here. So, um, I, I do ask that you compassionately consider this, this request. I'm going to go now to introduce you a little bit to Ben and Amanda, if I may, and I don't know, would you mind clicking the, the video so that you can see how, um, Mandy is affected? I don't think I can do that here. There we go. Okay. Well, imagine if you would. My daughter, who I dearly love, uh, has, has to use the walker a hundred percent of the time. I mean, she, she has had a couple of severe falls, broken bones and things, and she really is beholden to her walker. So she is a, an excellent, fine Christian young lady, very actively involved in church, sings in the choir every Sunday. And, uh, you know, I, I just think that, uh, you should know her a little bit and the, the purpose of the video is to show her disability and how it's difficult for her to walk forward. So then let's go on and talk a little bit about Ben. The next slide, please. Oh, I'm doing that. There we go. The guy in the fog over there, uh, is our youngest son. We have three, three adult children and one, uh, daughter in law. Ben too is, is active and an excellent Bible scholar. His, uh, his claim to fame is, uh, he can probably cite any chapter and verse that you want to hear. And, uh, he knows just about as much about movies. He's a real movie buff. So, um, his situation, not only does he have this, uh, difficulty walking, but the problems with intestinal disorder, our result of that and anxiety kind of is a, a real Achilles heel for him. All right. So, uh, it, it looks like I was able to start the movie. Unbeknownst to me, my little arrow does the job. So, uh, his, his walking is, um, you know, pretty dynamically drastically reduced. So every time, uh, he gets out of the car and I'm going to show you here, if I skip ahead. That's his car. That's his bathroom. The first door you see on the right. Uh, and then the door to the house is just behind that, uh, white cabinet there. To get into the house. So to take a, a 10 foot walk versus, you know, to take a longer walk would, would be difficult for him. So with that, uh, any questions on the family side? Thank you very much.
I, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
You showed us a picture of your son's car in the garage. It's a three car garage. So are there three cars parked in there?
Actually, yes, there are. And, and another one outside the car, outside the garage. We have four cars and five, four, we have four drivers and four cars.
Okay. Because I did see an earlier picture with a small, I think it looks like a Kia parked outside.
Yep.
And appeared to be space beside the Kia.
Oh yeah, there's space. The question is, okay, as a, as a member of a community that has three car garages sort of universally, it was certainly part of my, uh, requirements that we have a three car garage. Yes. Um, Ben could park inside. I could walk through the rain and, uh, and so on, because I don't need a walker. But I am 75 and, uh, you know, my ability and my wife's ability to walk won't be there for the long haul, I'm afraid. So that, that's a very legitimate, uh, observation Derek and not one that I disagree with, but, uh, I am making that plea nonetheless, that you allow us to keep that garage in place.
And concerning the bonus room, you, you have not developed that bonus room yet. It's still just empty?
It's, well, uh, is a school teacher and retired. She has, uh, she was a librarian. So that garage, the area above the garage is packed with boxes of school, uh, decorations, decor for various themes for the library. So it might be, uh, you know, dinosaur theme for books on the dinosaurs and the Muppets and Star Wars and every kind of imaginable box up there. So, um, it's definitely unused. It just needs to have drywall to, uh, keep it warmer and hook up the heater.
So it's just a bonus room up there? Is there any plumbing that goes?
It has, it has, well, there's no plumbing per se. Uh, it has a facility to add air ducts for cold air return and hot air supply. Yeah. So that's built into the attic, but, uh, not, uh, finished.
And then I'm going back to the deed covenants. What is the minimum square footage for, for your?
It actually is 3400 square feet.
You just made the minimum?
Yes.
And that does not include the bonus room?
It does not. You're right. Uh, it was habitable space, uh, or finished space rather.
And, uh, one additional question. So it sounds like you selected this lot to build on, correct?
Absolutely. I bought the lot independent of, uh, of Paul's advice or, you know, before we were in con, in conversation, but yeah, I, uh, purchased it outright.
Uh, well, because looking at the pictures, you can see clearly how the lot drops off and there's water in the back and so when plans were being drawn and you would discuss them with the builder, I noticed the line that was put on one of the earlier slides calling out the lot restrictions. Early on in the plan to, when you were looking at lots to potentially purchase and build, was there any attention paid to at that time? There could be potential restrictions here because I'm not a builder, not surveyor or any of that, but I can look at a picture and say that might be questionable, looking at a lot that drops, there's water behind it. I mean,
Great observation. Uh, to be very honest, and I truly am being honest, I did not consider that a problem. I saw the, uh, the significant drop in, in the level of the land from the street to the drop off. And thought, wow, this is a perfect place to do a raised, uh, you know, walkout basement. And that was, that's also an unfinished place as far as, uh, when Paul's, Paul's building activity took place. So yeah, shame on me. I'll, I'll raise my hand and say foul on me for not picking that up. But yes, uh, I thought the lot was sufficient to, uh, to do what we needed to do.
Did you consult with a builder or any, any type of engineer before you purchased the lot?
No.
Any further questions?
I'm not sure. What engineer drew the split plan for your storm line?
Paul?
I'm sorry. You said for York County, but York County doesn't provide stormwater engineers. So I was just.
Consult.
Why don't you come up and do it? Yeah, there's two that we've used and I think at the time it would have been Matt Velskovich. But he works with the county. I didn't say he worked for.
So when y'all took him a plan and said, you know, this is what we need to build on this lot, I'm, 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 I'm with you. Just looking over this, I mean, from the edge of your house to that silt fence is pretty, pretty sketchy, but, but most of the time, um, I'm a builder as well. And so when you, when you draw these up, you take them, uh, you know, I need to build this house on this lot. You know, what do we need to do? And, and most of, you, you can put, you know, a square peg in a round hole so many times it, it won't work. So most of the time, you know, they, they move that silt fence back as far as they can to make it work. So I'm just wondering, you know, did y'all take him this plan and say, this is what we need or, or did something change on it?
Yeah. So I will say now, like in some of the neighborhoods we do now, like Maygreen, um, he does, and this may be why, uh, he does the exact plan. I think he has like a 10,000 square foot impermeable. So he's following something. But all the, at least especially then, in the, being in the beginning and one of the first times on the lake there, it was more of a, just a square of where the house was, setback, side back, uh, septic system, which this doesn't have. But you, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, just the proposed area.
Really bad, but it is a vague square of where your location is.
Right.
And he's trying to mark off everything that's environmentally. And he's trying to mark off everything that's environmentally stormwater. And that's all evolved a lot since even then, when it was newer. But we just, I always tell homeowners, the rule is, I can't pass the by fence, because they're always asking what it is. But it's, that's a simple term for stormwater, keeping the silt on site.
Yeah, I understand that point.
And that might be why they do it now like that?
Trying to figure out how, you know, it's tight. I mean, it's a tight lot.
Yeah, they do the driveway and everything now, so it's every square foot.
That's right. I just wanted to make sure that that plan, that space was what was presented to them and where they drew that silt fence line at. Mr. Gass could probably speak on that better than I can.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I just find, so he drew, the swip was done with an original 50 by 50 box? How deep is that house?
I'm not saying it was 50 by 50 box, but I'm sure it didn't have all the nooks or anything. And also, yeah, I wish I had the swip in front of me.
Right. I mean, there's potentially, you know, typically when you draw today, back in 2018, it could have been somewhat different. You know, you take a floor plan, you work out the grading plan, and you position that silt fence. That silt fence, in my head, I would say that silt fence, I'm trying to protect the lake portion down there. I certainly could have moved that silt fence back or used a different technique.
Yeah, that house is 91 foot, 91.7 foot deep, so...
That's a deep house.
That's a very deep house.
You know, I'm looking at one now that's on a, I bet there is 50-foot fall from the front of that lot to the back, right? I have no idea how much falls on your lot. But we're actually having to build a retaining wall lower down on the lot to build that lot up in order to be able to position that house. There's techniques and different ways to make that happen. I just, I'm having a hard time wrapping around, my head around, the house was shown on one place on the swip, is what I'm being told, and one place on the plot plan, and it moved. How did it move?
Yeah.
Why did it move?
I agree with that.
Well, it probably moved because of that drop, and it wanted to come forward to save some dollars or whatever the case may be, but...
Well, so the engineer draws it, Matt, I'm sure. But Matt's never been on the site, right?
Can you just pick up a little bit? I think with the mask, it's, or closer to the microphone, thank you.
So the engineer draws the site plan. He's never been on the site. Matt wouldn't want to be on site. But then also, it even states in there a lot that the person meeting us on site, the dehect rep in the county, can make it fit the land that he's seen. So he's walking the site, telling us where to put that silt fence. I'm not saying, he didn't have a tape measure either measuring 250 feet back, right, or anything. I'm just trying to help you grasp what I'm trying to grasp, too.
Right.
It was a very vague thing, and now it's not, and I'm sure this is one of many, many reasons. It is like every square foot of anything being marked on a plan now, a stormwater.
That's right. In 2018, those plans were much more vague than they are today. I'm well aware of that.
He would even, but, and I agree, I just think that clearly the stormwater, the dehect guys walking out there going, this is your property edge, put your fence here, go up the edge, you know, he's not thinking, go down in the drop-off. But just me trying to clarify that, how we like it, Derek.
Can I make one more comment along those lines and referring to the comment made earlier about the fact that we signed in the application that we were unaware of this? We were unaware of it. And had we, I think you're very definitely on point when you say, you could have come up with a way, but we didn't recognize the problem. And then to perpetuate the mistake, we didn't have any holdback on the permits. So every inspection had its flaws or what, some had their difficulties, as you see in the cadence of a series of inspections. But there was never a red sign that came up and said, hey, stop, you guys are in the wrong spot. So shame on us, but it's, I think there's some culpability in the inspection theme. We wish they'd have caught it, and we could have done something before now, when we have a significant cost and, you know, dilemma facing us if we have to remove it. So any other questions for me? Thank you, folks.
So, yeah, once again, you've heard a lot about what happened. I do hope y'all can try to move past it a little bit and just understand that there were a lot of innate difficulties with building on this property. There were mistakes made, for sure, but it is a beautiful home that does fit the character of the neighborhood. The destruction of it would destroy the vision that Mr. Borg, when he was setting out to retire, and he did put his life savings in this, and he finally was able to come and build a home that fit the very unique aspects of his family, that his son and daughter, his wife and his sister-in-law can all live there and cohabitate. And just to, that three-car garage, believe it or not, with one person who's in their 70s and two people, two people who are in their 70s, not three, and two people with severe disabilities. And the reason we showed the video was to demonstrate that the mobility issue is severe. Just as the IBS is something that affects folks with cerebral palsy, it's inability to control your bowels because of stress and anxiety. It's why his son's not here, because this has been very stressful. We would just ask that you would consider granting this variance, and we will pray that y'all do so. Thank you so much for your time.
Any further questions?
I do. And not being a builder, engineer, I guess, why don't they inspect precast concrete foundations? Is there a reason for that?
Because usually an engineer signs off on that.
Okay.
Long story short, they, the liability goes on them. They say, hey, this can hold this house up.
Okay.
I don't know about necessarily it's in the right place, but usually, you know, if they have a, Mr. Gass can probably explain this better, and I can, but it's just, you know, a footer, if I'm gonna dig a hole in the ground, I've got somebody to come out and look at it before I can pour, you know, an inspector says, okay, that's good to pour in. Whereas those, you know, inspector can't go to their factory and see how they're made, so engineer says, this is how they're made, this is what they'll do.
Right.
And so they pretty much take the liability and say, this is what it is.
Okay, so there's no inspection that's needed once they pour that foundation?
They're poured before they get there.
Right, so, yeah, that I understand. So I guess, once they're placed, there's no additional county inspection until a later time?
Not, as far as I know, not on the actual wall themselves.
Okay, okay.
Just the last one I was involved with.
Yes.
So, and it may be a different system, so feel free to correct me. The panels themselves, the walls or the prefabricated pieces, or sometimes they, there's different techniques for doing those systems. But it still sits on a footing.
Right.
So the footing is dug, and the county, on the ones I've been involved with, comes out and does a footing inspection.
Inspection, sure.
Of that footing to ensure that they were excavated, the dirt's hard. They, that inspector does not look at it locationally. He has no way of knowing how far that is from a property pin or that, unless there's a glaring wow, which I think sort of happened here, there was a glaring, wow, that's really close to the street.
Once you put the garage in and everything, yeah.
But the onus is not on him to make that determination.
Okay.
Based on my experience.
Okay, that makes sense, okay.
Yeah. The one thing I'd say is there's no, it's like rock under it.
So those were sitting just on number 57?
There's no footer underneath it. There's a lot of people that you would put that, yeah, there's nothing.
Right, right. But you still dig a typical 12 by 12 trench and drop in number 57 stone or whatever the engineer recommended.
Six inches.
Six inches on that one?
Yeah.
You have pretty decent soil.
Just to piggyback a little bit on that point, real quickly, because I do, I know there's been a lot of shade casts on what the build itself and mistakes that we made, but there, it does, the question does highlight how this particular concern may have also helped to happen. And I do know that a lot of the houses in this neighborhood are built by, it's my understanding, a much larger builder, I believe they're called H&amp;H Homes.
Yeah.
And they have an engineer at every step of the process, right? And so my understanding is, and Mr. Smith or Mr. Gass can correct me, but that they present letters from the engineer to the county, also avoiding county involvement in the inspection process. Is that correct, or... So my understanding...
I did some work for H&amp;H, so it's sort of a weird...
No, it's not a bad thing. I'm not saying, I'm just saying it's just...
It's the same process. I do a swip, and they use somebody else to do inspections and pour the sediment and erosion control stuff.
Which is probably great. I'm just highlighting the difference, and that's why it might happen also with an H&amp;H home, just because of that, there's just a little bit of a oversight and a different oversight in the inspection process. Paul does custom homes, and almost every part of the process, he's directly dealing with the county. This one home, where he decided to use this one precast foundation, that particular part of the process had a different relationship with the inspection. That's the only point I was trying to make, to highlight that question. That's all. Thank you all so much.
Do you have a question?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Another question, Ernie?
Over here.
Yes.
Thank you. Who, I guess, who designed the home?
Mr. Mitty. Paul designed it. Yeah, Mr. Mitty turned key.
You created the layouts specifically for...
Mr. Borg.
Yep, they probably sat down in Paul's office, his home, and he's got this computer program, and it's like you're in a video game. It's, he designs really, really good homes, but this is a difficult property and a difficult build with a unique foundation each has.
But there wasn't an outside designer?
And I do believe the design at least passed the inspection process early on, and obviously something happened in the build.
So I have another question. If it wasn't a precast concrete and it's just a normal pouring concrete, would it have made a difference?
What goes...
Thanks.
Yeah, sorry. What goes through my head all the time is the pin on the concrete, like, that's where my brick masons are just, or block masons, right? We babysit middle schoolers, so they need those pins, and my surveyor, oh, I guess we would have had to dig it, too. There would have been stakes and pins. And I just, because when he called me, you could see the fear in his voice when he called me at the end, getting that survey. So that's where I think is, the traditional footer, you need temporaries stakes, like within a couple inches, they're wood stakes. They dig it out three inches both, past both sides, and then the pins come back and actually get driven into the concrete for the official location of the house. But that, I think that's what you asked, is a traditional one.
The inspection process would have been different, too, right?
Yeah, that's where you would traditionally, again, this is kind of a newer situation at the time in 2019, traditionally, you would see an inspection that would say fail, look for foundation, if they saw something, I think it would be there in my head. But that's the difference anyways.
So my only final remark is, we've highlighted the human element of this and how mistakes were made, but there were confined in that human element, the aspects of the C, guideline C, the kind of unmovable aspects of this property that also made this thing come true and make it so that a mistake like this could have happened. The environmental ones and the covenants are legal requirements that make this property what it is. And so just please keep that in mind, too, in addition to the, some of the human area that's been focused on. Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you. All right, anybody to speak in favor of the variance request? Please come forward, and remember, state your name and address.
My name is Marlene Shankle, and I'm here with my husband, Robert, and we live at 639 Highland Ridge Point. And we're here to show our support for the favor of the variance and to leave the home as it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor? Please come forward.
My name's Beth Courtney. I'm, I live in Charlotte, but I own the lot right next to his, to build on, that has not built on. So I'm in favor of him getting his variance. Does anyone need anything else from me?
Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward? Yes.
My name's Bonnie Crawl, and I'm Bill's sister, and I live in Tega K. And my husband and I went out and, Bill called us and gave us a list of lots because he was not local. So we were the ones that first saw the lot, and of course, it's woods, you can't, you know, you have no idea. All I knew is Bill wanted a walkout basement, and we thought, oh, this is going to lend itself perfectly to that. So things evolved, and that's what happened. But they went through everything, and I remember the call that we got when they moved in. And they were in shock that, all of a sudden, they said, we can't move in, we're not supposed to move in, there's something wrong. And it was, all of us were in shock. These are two people, this family and Paul, who never tried to pull the wool over anybody's eyes or anything like that. It was honest mistakes that were made. And now, got a family that's established in this home, doesn't seem to me like the neighbors, it's not causing any problems, doesn't seem like the neighbors object. And I'm just hoping that practical, practicality and compassion enter the arena tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak against? Please come forward.
I'm at 540 Highland Ridge Point. It's also mentioned, and here is one of the previous houses that was chopped, was based on a 8.7 foot was the variance that was asked for, and it was for the same thing, three-car garage over the line, and it was denied. My biggest concern from it is, is that the aesthetics of the neighborhood would be adversely affected. Right now, you can't really tell that that house is, you know, completely over the line due to all of the evidence that was already presented. Currently has two vacant lots on each side of the house. Once those houses are put in place and built for the neighborhood, then you're going to have this particular house sitting extremely close to the street. From that regard, it's also part, you know, of the entrance to the neighborhood, and you're going to see this one house that extrudes way too far beyond that limit. I would see where those exact same owners or builders would come right back here in front of this group and ask for another variance. So I know that was brought up a little bit earlier, that that might not necessarily be the case. You're absolutely right, it might not be, but you're kind of setting a precedence there that this particular house, if it was granted the variance, would adversely affect the remaining development of the neighborhood. So that's why I speak against it. I have all the respect in the world for Bill and his family, they've been excellent neighbors. We've enjoyed having them there, even had a lot of positive community involvement from the family, so I feel for them. This particular part is not their fault at all, but law is the law, and I think it would hurt this neighborhood if this was allowed to go in place as is. We already know that the, in addition to looking at the slot, if it would have been caught earlier, that there are vacant lots next to it, they could have been purchased, the house could have been flipped a different direction. There were a lot of things that could have been done to address these issues if it was caught earlier. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's George Boylow. I live at 532 Highland Ridge Point, which is about five lots away from this one. And I'm in a little bit of a unique situation in that this is the third meeting I've attended. I attended the meeting when the house at 540 next to me was presented to this board, and you guys denied it. And I actually spoke for that one, because I didn't want that garage torn down. But that garage was torn down. But that garage was torn down and I actually have a video of it being torn down on my phone. I can't show it like I didn't bring a PowerPoint. I'm not an attorney. I wasn't planning for this. But I do have a video of it and you can see how the, what had to be done to tear that house down and it, and it did get torn down. And it's now a two car garage. Um, I also have a little bit of a problem with the house. And, and first, let me say, I have no ill will against the Boyers. I don't know them. I've spoken to them once or twice, but I certainly have no ill will against them. And I wish them all the luck, but you can't, you can't say tear down this house and not tear down that house. It, it's, it doesn't work that way. What's fair for the, for the goose is, is what's good for the goose is good for the gander. It seems like this is a, a situation of, um, it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission. And I think had they come before you to begin with, you would have denied it. So it's the same thing. I'm looking at this, this page and it shows this lot. If I can see it right, at one oh seven point five feet across. My lot is one hundred feet across. Um, it's on that sheet. Where's the pointer? Green button at the top. So, um, one, two, my house is right in here, right there. My house drops off sixty-five feet from the street. You were asking about the drop off. My house drops off sixty-five feet from the street to the back of the property. The, the same stream that feeds the lake, um, runs behind my house. The, uh, I, I was here two years ago and that's something else I don't understand is how we got back here after you guys denied it. I don't, I don't quite understand how we're here again for a second bite of the apple. But two years ago, when I sat in the same spot, um, Mr. Moody was speaking, he didn't have an attorney at the time, and he said a couple of interesting things. One, to your point, where he said that when they, when they built the basement, the backhoe driver came out and measured a line from the street to a point and started digging. And that's where they, that's where the, the placement of the placement in the house was decided by the backhoe digger. That's, that's what he said. Don't take my word for it. You should have the transcripts. You can go back and listen to it. But there, it obviously wasn't staked out or, or it would have been found. It, there should have been a, 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 a pre-survey or something. So they knew exactly where to position everything. I don't think any of that was done, obviously. So, um, there's a thing in here about public notification. Yes, I saw the sign and public feedback and it says that, uh, they received some calls and nobody expressed concern. I didn't, I didn't make a call. Because I knew I was going to be at this meeting and, but what I did do is after the last meeting in twenty nineteen, you gotta remember COVID hit in early twenty twenty and this kind of dropped dead. I did call the, the county manager. I don't know if it's one of you guys, but I did call, I don't know who I spoke to, but I spoke to him a couple of times. And I asked what's going on with this house and they said they're taking it to court, which I know now I guess means mediation. But there was interest in it after the last meeting and nothing happened. I don't know how you can live in a house without a COA. In fact, I brought up to the, the, the manager on the phone that by the county allowing somebody to live in a house that has no COA, if, if something were to happen, God forbid, and the house burned down, the county might be liable for that because the county knows that there's people living in the house without a COA. So I don't know how the county could allow the, the, the people to move in and actually occupy the house. Now for two years without a COA, that, I, I just don't understand that. This lot is not unique, um, to the, to the, uh, community. The, uh, all the, all the lots, nearly all the lots in this community have a stream behind them and, and drain into the lake. This, this lot is not unique in that, in that manner. My lot, my house is about thirty-six hundred square feet and this lot is wider and my house fits on my lot, but I, I don't know, but I don't, I don't have a finished basement. So I'm wondering if this square footage that's being quoted here tonight, it does not include the basement.
Can you?
It does not include the basement. So, so, so there is a, there is a whole basement down there that can be finished at some point that will add probably two thousand square feet to this, to this house. So, with limited building space, the house could not be compliant with the deed covenants. At the, at the two thousand nineteen meeting, they, Mr. Moody said that to build the house further back would have required them to bring in fifty or sixty truckloads of dirt to be able to push that house further back and that would have been too expensive. So that's why I think this is more of asking for, um, forgiveness than asking for permission. I think they knew that at the time. And they, and they just decided, well, we'll just come and ask for forgiveness and get a variance after the house is built. I have no evidence of that, but that's what it feels like to me because of, of what was said at the last meeting. And again, it's public. You guys can go and, and, and re, and listen to those tapes. I'm guessing all this is recorded. Granting the variance will not maintain the character of the, uh, of the neighborhood. This house is noticeably closer to the street. And I've had people with me and I've driven into the neighborhood, not said anything about anything. You know, we, we're just talking because we have to go by this house every time we come in and out of the neighborhood. And, and I've had people sit next to me and say, that house looks awfully close to the street. And I'm like, yeah, exactly. But for two years I've wondered what was going on with this until the sign was placed in the front yard. And so for all those reasons, and again, no ill will towards the Boyers, I am against it and don't know how you can approve this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak against the request? Please come forward.
My name is Bob Shanko. I live at six thirty-nine Highland Ridge Point. My wife spoke earlier. She and I are both in favor of letting it go like it is. We pass by his house numerous times a day. I see no difference in his being close to the street than I do many other homes. I cannot measure it because he goes down like that. It's not straight. But it's, it's, looks just like probably six or eight other homes, same distance. And for somebody to say that when they drive through the neighborhood, people are saying, hey, why is this person so close? I bet I've driven through that neighborhood probably two thousand times. Nobody has ever said that to me. I don't understand this, this man saying what he did. This is a beautiful home. It should stay like it is. It's an addition to the neighborhood. And I believe somebody said that we've had fifteen or eighteen residents say, leave it like it is. And I say, leave it like it is. Thank you.
Do you want to briefly rebut a few of the points that the concerned citizen made?
Well, let's let everybody speak.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Everyone in person wants to speak?
I'm Bob Crawl. I'm Bill's Boar's brother-in-law. And I think that everyone here has presented really good facts. They had great questions. There's one thing I have concern with. Gentlemen, it was just up here cast aspersions on Bill about his integrity. Bill is a man of integrity and I will go to the wall for him.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else that wants to speak? Please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and allow the applicant to speak again, please.
Thank you. Um, but just briefly, I just want to make sure that y'all do have the fifteen letters that were submitted by email. Some of them are family, but a good bit of them are residents of the neighborhood. We do, if you read the transcript from the previous hearing, the idea that Mr. Moody or Mr. Boar were ever trying to, because I don't want y'all left with the impression that they were trying, that this was some plan. They thought they'd get away with it. And now they're asking for forgiveness. Read that transcript and all you see are, uh, people falling on their swords. And that's what we've done during here today too. So that from, y'all have, the law allows y'all to have the power to grant this variance. And I do feel as though we've presented some facts that, that, that hit the actual legal reasons why you might do so. I don't want that to be colored by any, uh, thoughts about their integrity. I, I've dealt with them for a very long time. As a lawyer, I believe you have to either believe in your cause or you have to believe in your client. And this, the reason I forgot this case is because from day one, both these individuals have had the utmost integrity and it's been hard to represent both of them. But I, I don't think you could be left with the impression that there was ever, based off our presentation or based off, based off the previous presentation, that their transcript, where they just come in here like a deer in headlights, thinking that this is uh, not, not understanding the process and falling on their sword the entire time. Uh, there's no, um, so once again, I hope that y'all are not left with that impression and I do think there's lots in the record to show otherwise. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, no further comments from the public? So we need a, uh, motion from the board? Grant, deny? Do we have a motion?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the variance.
We have a motion to approve and a second for discussion. Feel free to start, Barbara.
Well, I will start discussion. Um, my big, um, I guess back in December, um, I know, cause I was able to go back and, and look at the records. My, my biggest, um, issue was item C, um, because of the conditions, um, of this particular piece of property would effectively, effectively prohibit or restrict the utilization of the property. Um, I must have overlooked that about the minimum square foot, which is thirty-four hundred. And, um, you know, there's some discussion regarding the silt fence and the placement of the silt fence and you know, it, it appears, you know, there is a big drop off. There's, you know, environmental factors, you know, it, it was a large house squeezed onto a small piece of buildable land. Um, I mean, obviously Mr. Moody has, has said, you know, mistakes were made. There was, you know, some oversight, you know, things that were overlooked and with the inspections and such. You know, it, this is a really a tough one. I just think that they did prove that C, that, you know, they did prove C with the limited building space, um, with the minimal lot size. I also, you know, have to question, you know, this is a garage, you know? Part of me thinks that, yeah, a garage would be easy to tear down and rebuild and, and, and make it smaller. You gotta bring in the factor. There's, there's, there's a bathroom in there. There's, there's a room above it. It's not an easy fix. Um, I'm not even thinking about the cost. I'm just thinking of, you know, just it, it's, it's just not an easy fix. It's difficult. I think you're making, I, what's there now is safe. It's, it's, I think if you start recon, you know, demolition, reconstructing, I think it's, it makes a unsafe, I mean, a safe spot, unsafe. I think, you know, if, if this was the house and not the garage, would we make them tear the house down? Um, you know, I, I don't think that would be the case. I think I just, yeah, I, I, we'll start with that, you know, with discussion, see what you guys have to say, but I just believe that C was proven to be a hardship or, you know, that it was difficult to place the property on, the house.
Tony, Tony, put your microphone on, please.
I'm still on the fence with this, but, um, I, I, I would like to say this is an honest mistake because, uh, you know, as a builder, this is one of my worst nightmares. Um, but I, I think that either, either Mr. Moody missed it altogether or he, he, what I'm trying to get at is here, you don't get an email on the tenth saying that your, your plumbing under slab failed because you need a foundation survey and you schedule a slab inspection the next day and get it approved. I mean, that's just, you know, I, I don't, I don't see how that happens. Um, I, I don't know, you know, if he was trying to get by with it. I would like to think, no, that, that he didn't know that he needed that. Um, I thankful that the county has changed their rules where you can't get another inspection until you get, if they offer a silt foundation survey. Apparently this was not the case back then. You know, can, can y'all pull back up the aerial, the drone photos? I, I, like I said earlier, you know, thirty-four hundred square foot requirement is, is tough on these small lots where you're on top of a hill, but there's ways around that too. And so, um, you know, I, I feel like it, it, if, if anybody's presenting a hardship for needing a three car garage, they've pulled on my heartstrings here and I feel like if anybody needs one, they do. So, so that's why I'm kind of on the fence about it. Um, but if this would have been brought to us, you know, before, I, I believe I would have denied it. But I just, I'm, I'm still uncertain. I, I mean, I feel a little different about this. So I'll let you guys talk me one way or another.
I mean, from a, from a heartstring, heartstring perspective, I'm right there. I mean, I certainly feel for these folks. I, I feel for the, really get the, any kind of dishonesty vibe or anything like that. I think y'all are great. Stand-up folks. From, from an engineering standpoint, uh, uh, I look at this aerial right here and the only thing in my opinion that would keep this house from sliding back the ten point two feet that it needs is potentially some fill material. Not too long ago, I had a, I, I looked at a house, similar situation on the lake. The folks wanted one certain house plan. That house plan did not fit on the lot that they purchased before they got professional advice. Those poor folks, I hate it, but they had to sell that lot and go buy one that the house that they had to have would fit on. Just is what it is. So we were asked to kind of look at this in a vacuum like this was, you know, this house is not built per se and that would we, you know, would I, would we grant that variance? If this house was not built yet, my answer to that would be no, for me personally, they would eat that, you know, find a different lot, find a different plan. That's sort of my opinion on it. I recognize the family hardship for sure. It, these are tough.
I go ahead and see, um,
I was well, this one is a challenge for me because you totally have empathy for the family. I don't think it was any doing on their part, but I do believe the builder and some of the folks in that process dropped the ball somewhere. Normally you would want to give one under those circumstances. However, there is precedent in the same neighborhood where other homes have had to have been altered because of similar situations. So does it come down to the people that live in this house versus the people who live in that house? Are we basing it on that? Because the lots are similar.
Yeah, but, but every decision we make is, does not set a precedent because every, every situation is unique.
Um, well, true, true, but I'm saying, the point I'm making is if other homes in that neighborhood have been altered because they weren't given it a variance. I do, we solely say having to alter a home in the neighborhood is going to be that impactful if it's, if it's been done in prior situations? if it's, if it's been done in prior situations? If there are similar lots, similar restrictions? So, and, and, and I'm not saying I've totally decided yet, but it is, it is a hard decision.
Here's where I struggle with C. And I, I, I agree with all of what's been said before, I'm, I'm struggling with this one for all the reasons that's been stated. But I will point out, as I look at this photo, and this photo really shows it. I've heard time and time again, this is a tight lot, we've got restrictions on this lot. And yet, I see a thousand, probably, I'm just going to roughly guess, a thousand square feet of prime real estate that has a sidewalk and a little grass running through it. And so if this house, if this lot was so restrictive, why did I waste that prime real street with a sidewalk and some grass? That's a simple design change, granted. If you want to take the other side of that is, when this design was put into motion, they didn't think they had a problem. So there's two sides of that, but I'm just pointing that out, this photograph shows that for me.
Well, I, I'll just say, we have four conditions we have to meet, and we have to meet those four conditions whether there's a home on the property or not. And, and, and it is a very compelling story, all the way from, you know, maybe there was some carelessness involved in, in, in the mistake that was made. Obviously, the family has some, you know, a very compelling situation. But none of that can really be considered in those four points. It, it's, it's, the four points apply whether there's a house on there or whether there is not. And if you look at the four point, four points, the very first one, there has to be something extraordinary and exceptional about the property. Well, it, it's, it's essentially a lakefront property. I realize there isn't a great view of the lake from there, but it, it is subject to the buffer, it's right there on the, at least a piece of the lake. And nearly every lot on the lake has grade issues. And, and you can't say that, there's hundreds of lots around the lake that have grade issues, but this one has grade issues, so it's extraordinary. It, it's actually ordinary, th- this is a very common thing around the lake. And we see this again and again with lots on the lake. It, it's, it's not extraordinary and exceptional, it does not make that first, that very first requirement. I, I will say, and, and Tony is right, the, the decisions of the board do not set a precedent. While there's a standard of precedent, but there's also a standard of fairness.
Right.
And, and, and that kind of has to be at least considered. If this house didn't exist, I don't, and it was just a blank lot, we would have been done with this case by six-thirty, and we would have come back to the same vote we did a couple of years ago. That, that, that's my opinion. It, it, it is a very compelling story, but the conditions are still not met. And there's, nothing can be done, and you don't, if you can't satisfy those four, there's no way to move forward.
Any further comments?
Well, I just, I'm, I just asked my fellow members, I mean, I mean, I, I think it's evident that mistakes were made, oh, you know, things, things slipped through that probably should not have. I just, I mean, we, it's a garage, I understand, and, and, you know. But again, you know, if this was the house that was in the setback, would we, would we require them to tear down the house? I'm just going to leave it at that. Okay, and that's, yeah, is an honest answer.
I have liability insurance for that very, those very mistakes.
All right, no further comments, we have a motion to approve, a second. All in favor of approving the variance, please raise your right hand. Two, all, any opposed, raise your right hand. Two to five, all right, so now we need a motion to deny. Motion deny. Second, we have a motion to deny and a second. Right, any further discussion? All in favor of denying the variance request, raise your right hand. All opposed to the denial, raise your right hand, okay. Up to two. Motion, variance is denied. All right.
May I ask just one question?
Yes.
What's the expectation as far as the timeframe for making this change?
Uh, county staff, how this, this will be rectified then with a denial? It's up to the county to, again, work with the county to fix, fix the,
The only concern I have is the possibility of bad weather impacting access to the house while this is taking place. So I would ask for some leniency.
Yeah, we'll, we'll certainly work with you, we can get in touch with you, Mr. Moody, and.
Thank you. All right, our next case. Z twenty-one dash forty-seven.
So the denial's coming, no, the, it's coming first, okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks for noting that.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Kirchner, I work in commercial zoning for York County. Uh, the next case we have is communication tower public service use request and variance request for a one-hundred-and-sixty-five-foot communication tower and for the camouflage design, case number Z twenty-one dash forty-seven. The applicant is Selco Partnership and Verizon Wireless. The property location is four-hundred-and-seventy Param Road in the Clover community. The zoning district is agricultural, which is AGC. The request is for a communication tower public service use, sections one-fifty-five-point-five-one-zero through one-fifty-five-point-five-one-seven for a one-hundred-and-sixty-five-foot communication tower in a variance from section one-fifty-five-point-five-one-one F-eleven, which is the camouflage design requirement in a residential property. Here's the subject property's zoning map. The proposed tower is on the east side of Param Road, that part of the parcel. You see the aerial, uh, you can see the, the field kind of area where the proposed tower would be located. Here is the site plan, site survey provided by the applicant, showing the proposed leased space area for the communication tower. You can see the Duke Energy Transmission Line easement for some transmission lines that run through the property.
Can you back up one slide then?
Sure.
So where is the, where is the power line going through, existing power line?
It's kind of across here, and you'll be able to see it in some of the photos, this way. The substation that the board saw the other month is up in this area, up by five-five-seven, Highway five-five-seven. Uh, Highway fifty-five is below, so, that way, to give you kind of a reference where the proposed tower would be located. So again, this shows the survey on Param Road and the proposed leased area. Here shows the aerial of the property with the overlay of the proposed site, including the setbacks, tower setbacks, proposed buffer yards. Of course, there's all the information in your packet. Behind here, this for a reference, there is a, I believe Duke Energy called a switching station for the transmission line easement, that's kind of behind where the proposed tower would be located. Here's a zoom in of the proposed site, you can see the compound where the communication equipment would be, where the tower would be, the fall radius, engineer fall radius area outside of the easement, the Duke Energy easement, access road out to Param, which is just an improvement of existing sort of farm drive into the site, and the setback radiuses and buffers. This is a proposed monopole tower with the Verizon proposed wireless antennas and other future co-locating ability for the tower. Uh, this is a landscape plan of the compound where it will have a twenty-foot buffer around it be planted to kind of screen the, the area with all the generators and, and other equipment that goes along with the communication tower. This shows like a landscaping plan overall. The applicant is proposing to preserve a type B buffer along the road as per industrial standards. Apparently, some of this existing vegetation's been reviewed, we spoke to, spoke to the applicant, and they've agreed, obviously, that they will plant whatever they need to, to fill in the existing vegetation to, you know, make sure the buffers meet the type B buffer yard requirement on the perimeter of the property. This is the coverage map the applicant has provided to staff and for the application, showing the Verizon coverage in the area. And you can see what they're proposing is to fill in this gap. Staff spoke to the applicant about, you know, why is the location chosen? It's obviously centrally located, you know, but they've told us essentially located between the other towers that they're utilizing. I believe it's between the two highways as well, it's situated between Highway five-five-seven and Highway fifty-five to provide the best coverage area, so this is in their centralized, I guess, coverage ring that they were trying to place the tower. So that's why the location was chosen. We have some photos of the balloon test that shows the proposed location of the tower on the site. Uh, you can see the location of the balloon, and of course, they add the rendering as usual to kind of show what a monopole would look like on the site. Uh, this is from, I believe, south, and then looking up, and then you can see the proposed rendering, what the tower would look like, and this is from another direction. And, and another visual, and you can also see the overhead towers, which are near the property, near the subject property, and across the subject property, and where the proposed tower would be. The applicant also has, whoops, also has looked at the possibility of having a monopine design, if, another option for possibly camouflaging, which we will talk about, but that's another option that they looked at, that the board could approve or not approve. Talking about just the variance criteria on the camouflaging, was considered camouflaging? We've had these come in before, and in this particular case, because it's right next to some transmission lines, we feel like probably the monopole, you know, the, the, where the metal design will match in what is there, as opposed to the monopine. But we want to give the board the option of looking at the, what is the best camouflage design for this location? And so we have the variance in there that's kind of in the code section for communication towers. They have that option either between the monopole for the site or the monopine. Just about the camouflage design variance. We, for the height of the tower to be one-hundred-and-sixty-five feet, the structure must be a camouflage design. The applicant is requesting a variance for the camouflage design in order to install a standard galvanized pole, as opposed to the monopine design. The monopole, I believe, will blend better with the area due to the presence of the above-ground Duke Energy Transmission Towers. But the applicant is, also has a monopine design, as I said, to install if the board doesn't want to approve that variance. Uh, staff does recommend approval of the camouflage design variance to allow just the monop- a monopole, as opposed to the monopine in the AGC district. So we have the approval criteria for the public service use. Uh, I'm not going to go through each one of those, I will point out a couple of things if, if you have questions. Uh, it was noted that the, the FAA approval, because it was, the, it was continued on from last month, is expired. The applicant said they have re-applied, they just haven't got the paperwork back. It's the same application for the same thing. As for federal rules, they have to have the FAA approval, and we will require a staff, they provide us with the updated FAA approval before approval of site plan, if the public service use is approved.
So we would need to add a condition if, if that were the case?
No, I would not allow, I would not approve the site plan unless all that paperwork was in order. Because, just as a process, they have a, a site plan that has been reviewed, but it is just a conceptual plan to the board. It still has to be final review, disturbance has to be approved, you know, all the other stuff, site plan things. So it still has to go through that approval process, which we can double-check to make sure everything is in place before we do that final approval of the site plan and building plans. Go through, if you have any specific questions about the criteria, we can talk about that. But I want to talk about, before our last meeting, we did get some feedback from the public, I think you've been made aware of that. Some were against, I think at least one was for. I don't know if any of the, the neighbors are here there for that, but because it was deferred, because the applicant couldn't make that meeting, they have reached out to some of those people that were concerned, so the applicant, I'm sure they can speak about what those conversations were like. But they were made aware of the fact that some of the residents had voiced concern about it, and were given the option to kind of reach out them, out to them and talk to them. And so with, with it meeting all the criteria for a public service use, as far as the minimum criteria for the code, staff recommends approval of the project, but of course, the board can impose conditions such as buffer improvements or other restrictions as a part of that approval, if you wish to approve the public service use. So we have the variance request for the monopine versus the monopole design, you know, and then obviously the approval of the public service use before the board tonight. And of course, the applicant here is to answer questions specifically about the site. Do you have any questions about the application or the site plan for me?
Any questions for staff? No? Thank you. Will the applicant come forward, please?
You can go back and forth if you want to, you want to go onto a certain, like the aerial or something?
The propagation map would be good.
Okay, propagation map.
So it's just,
Back and forth.
Okay. Good evening, board members. I'm Victoria Farmer, and I'm here tonight from Utoa, Tennessee, which is just outside of Chattanooga. Thank you so much for allowing me to make this presentation on behalf of Verizon Wireless for this new telecommunications facilities. Can y'all hear me okay? I've got a sore throat. Verizon Wireless is continually improving its networks to best meet the needs of growing communities. This is a proposal for an antenna support structure of one-hundred-and-sixty-five feet by Verizon Wireless. It will specifically increase the coverage in the community and provide reliable contiguous coverage along State Road S-four-six-fifty-four, State Highway fifty-five east, in the northern region of north of York County. Our propagation studies, which have been provided with this application, show this location will integrate well into the existing wireless network to reduce voice drop calls in the area and to improve the data usage for all of its customers. in the area and to improve the data usage for all of its customers. I wish to point out that the existing power utility structures in the area around the site are limited to an approximate antenna height installation of only 100 feet. So suggestions of co-location at this deficit height would have greatly limited the coverage of the proposed site and prevent the achievement of Verizon's objective. To that end, and to abide with York County's communication tower public service requirements, the design of this facility will include space for co-location by future wireless providers. This facility also meets or exceeds all the radio frequency admission standards as required by the FCC. Section 155 510-4 provides that no communication tower shall be improved to be installed that will be within 2,640 feet of an existing facility. I've provided documentation that has shown that there are no viable structures within this radius measurement. It also, the ordinance also requires that there be a minimum distance equal to one and a half times the tower height from any single residence, church, or school. Including in the site plans on page C0, a 247.5 radio switches, one and a half times the height is depicted. The placement of this facility is more than adequately placed and more than meets the requirements of this section. He has already pointed out the L2 for the proposed plans to show the landscaping with the type P buffer. If existing, of existing vegetation is removed, we'll replace it. The FAA determination of no hazard, which he has pointed out, it did expire, but we have submitted for an extension of that approval. We expect it to be back within 30 or 60 days from the date of application, which will bring it to be, I think they filed in December, so that means we expect this to be at the end of January, mid-February to receive the extension of that approval. Also note that this structure, as with all other wireless facilities, will be subject to the licensing authority of any and all applicable FCC regulations and will be mandated to operate in compliance with those regulations and in compliance with York County. We live in a society where our phones have become a central tool for daily living. The benefits of this site in this area of York County go beyond just convenience for our residents and businesses. Quality wireless service has become essential to critical infrastructure necessary for public safety and first responders. I ask that consideration of this application should not be limited to examining the design and location of the project. The positive impact and benefit of the site should be given full weight as well. The new site will work toward meeting the ever-expanding infrastructure needs of the residents and visitors to York County and will provide much-needed access to emergency services. Given the design, the location, and benefits that will be provided by this proposed site and compliance with the requirements, conditions, and specifications of the York County statutes and all applicable federal and state laws, Verizon respectfully requests approval of their application. I'll take questions if you have any at this time.
So your tower's 165 feet?
Yes, sir.
And how much better would your coverage be if it were 170 feet?
I'm not an RF engineer, I can't really answer that question. I think that the lightning arrestor is above the height of that 165. The actual stacked steel will come to 165.
And the rationale of requesting the camouflage variance?
We had gone through site plan review last summer with the monopine design and it came to our attention that because of its relatively, relativity to the existing overhead transmission lines, that it would be less obtrusive to change to the standard galvanized pole to be compatible with that overhead power line. They thought that the monopine perhaps would stand out more than, than to compare with the existing lines. But we've kept the drawings that we had originally and we're leaving it up to the board to make the decision on which design they would prefer.
Any other questions? So you had some meetings with the neighbors?
There was a community meeting held at the, you know, a year or so ago, but we've had several site plan reviews since then. In preparation for this meeting this evening, I did have phone meetings with neighbors that were concerned, yes.
So what preference did the neighbors express for monopole or monopine?
They didn't have any preference. I mean, there were actually a few of them that expressed the monopole over the monopine. They felt that it didn't, it wasn't, they didn't really like the monopine.
I'll say that the camouflage design sometimes, really, we've seen a lot of these, you know, cellphone app, tower applications, but normally I'm rather skeptical of the camouflage designs. But in looking at this application, it's kind of changed my view a little bit because if, if you are up close to a camouflage design, it, to me, it looks ridiculous. I've never seen 165-foot pine tree. But when you, when you are at a distance where it blends more with its surroundings, it does blend in better.
Understood.
And it actually does blend in better. So does the camouflage design, in the packet, it says that you already have two other carriers, I guess, signed up, contracted to use the tower?
I don't have that information available to me. Where are they going to be? Verizon will be the initial tenant, of course, and I believe at the time that we submitted the application to the board, there was another applicant for, to be a tenant on this site. Whether or not there were two, I'm not aware of.
So two questions related to other applicants. So if this tower was 150 feet tall, does that make it more difficult to get other, other carriers to also piggyback on your tower? Considering they can't build another tower within, you know, close by anyway, they're kind of stuck with it.
Did you say 150 feet? I'm sorry.
Well, it just is an example. Does making a tower shorter make it more difficult for you to have other carriers also use the same tower?
The short answer is yes. The 165 accommodates the center line that is needed by Verizon in order to achieve the propagation that they're planning in the system. Other carriers, when they attach to this site, will require a separation between the antenna array. So if it was a shorter tower, that would give them less space to, well, we wouldn't be able to have as many tenants as we would at 165, just simply because of the vertical space requirements that have to be between the antenna arrays.
Does a camouflage design have any effect on the ability to get other carriers to also use the same tower?
Some of them do, some of them do. For instance, if it's an internal canister, there's not much room inside of an internal canister that allows for more carriers to go in there, just simply for the size of the canister can't bridge that gap. Monopines, because you can allow for external equipment to be mounted, they can accommodate the number of tenants that is shown on the drawings, yes. It all depends on which stealth is being asked for.
So there's a, there's a statement here in the county's, actually it's part of county code. Says for height variances beyond that permitted in the district, the applicant has demonstrated that such additional height will not visually impact a property. But there's actually two of the, of the pictures that you took showing what the tower would look like, you know, your simulations, where I would think if the tower was a little bit shorter, you wouldn't be able to see it at all. So it will be visible at your proposed height and probably not visible at the county's limited height.
However, if you lower the height of the tower, we would not be able to achieve the coverage that is being proposed. That would make a huge difference in their propagation.
Yeah, I can understand that. But, but my point is that this just specifically mentions will not visually impact a property, which, which to me says you can't see it. And it will clearly be more visible being 165 feet than it would at the standard 150.
And what is your question?
Well, wouldn't you agree that, that the tower is more visible and has a visual impact on a property if it is made taller?
Yeah, I don't know that it really would have a huge difference in 15 feet. You know, if you're standing on the ground and looking up, I don't know that 15 feet would be that big of a visual difference, but it would make an enormous difference to an RF engineer.
I don't think you would notice it in close proximity to the tower. But as you start backing away, the, you will see it more, you see the height, to a great extent.
Which is why they relocated, this was, this was a site that was in a different spot on the property at first and they relocated to be closer to the transmission lines so that the visibility would be minimized. You're already looking at above-ground infrastructure there.
How far is it from the transmission line?
We're as close to the transmission line as their setback will allow. I mean, they have, they have an easement that's, that we have to adhere to. And I believe that if you look back on the site plan, that we are right up on that easement.
So you did consider other locations?
Yeah. It was, there was another orientation on the same property and once I had the discussions with some of the neighbors being concerned about the location, I had some research done and it looks like in 2018, when the site was first being proposed, that the real estate services group asked that we move it closer to the power line. There was some opposition about where they were going to initially place this tower. So they did move the site to be less obtrusive.
Was there any thought of actually putting it on the power line or is that?
Well, that was what I addressed earlier. They did look at the power line, but there wasn't enough height on the existing tower that's there to allow for them to get this propagation that they need.
Because it would have to be below the power line, not above the power line.
That's true, that's correct, yeah. So our, our center would have been at 100 feet, which is significantly lower than what we're needing, yeah.
Let me go back to a comment you made on the monopine.
I'm sorry?
On the monopine.
Yes.
Did you state that it actually gives you more options to add?
It gives you more opportunity for more additional co-locations because the antennas are externally mounted. I don't know if any of you are familiar with what we call the slick stick, which is simply just a pole. It just goes, you know, there's nothing on the outside. That will require internal canisters and specially-designed antennas that go inside of the canisters that go inside of the pole. Those take, the canisters themselves take up a lot of vertical space because the antennas go inside of them. That would probably knock out the opportunity to add one of the co-location that we, that you see on the drawings, so there'd be less, less tenants on that tower versus an external mount.
Monopine, you can use the branches.
The branches covered up, yeah.
Let me ask another question. We do have in the packet one, one monopole design, or monopole in the balloon study. Were there other graphics or were, did you do that to any of the other balloon sites?
I didn't understand the question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me ask it differently. So in the, in the balloon, in the balloon study, you know, we have the balloon and then it's followed up with, here's what the monopole looks like.
Yeah, the simulation, yeah.
As a simulation. There was only one of those where you, you showed both the monopole and the monopine. Was the monopine simulation done on any other studies and is that something we can see?
We submitted slides with the monopine design at first because the ordinance asks for anything above 150 feet to be camouflaged. So all of the slides had the monopine depicted. And then further into the site plan review, you know, it was, maybe we should switch it to the galvanized steel so that it would blend in better with the, you know, the already above-ground infrastructure. And so we produced a second set of slides, the same number as the first, but the difference being the monopole was depicted instead of the monopine.
But we don't have those, those are not in that, okay.
Well, they are of record. We did put them of record.
So when you were doing the slides with the monopine pictures, was, were those taken for where, where the current location is?
Yes, yeah. They're exactly in the same location, it's just a different design, yeah.
Was there any thought to, if you did the monopine, to put it closer to where it could be more camouflaged with trees or surrounding it, you know, away from the substation and in less?
Well, we did move the site once.
Right, so where was the original site?
I think it was, let me back up. I'm going to have to guess because I'm, I was brought into this project at, you know, late to the party, so I believe that it was, if you look at the landscaping plan, there's a house over to your right. I think it was actually closer to that house. And when they discovered that that house was being built, they...
Moved, they moved it over to give it more space in between. Okay. Yeah, I guess where I was coming from was if, if you diverted back to more the camouflage, is there a better, better location within this parcel where it would be more camouflage closer to trees and so forth?
It looks, I mean, just from the overhead, from that Google Earth map that's up on the screen now, it appears that at least the, the backside is covered with some existing vegetation. And what, what the A and E firm indicated to me that because of some of the vegetation that we were planning on using as buffer has been removed by the owner or somebody, we didn't remove it, that they would be willing to replant or add on, as if you all have desire of what type of landscaping you want to use, but we intend to work with you on that.
Okay, so the owner does not live in the community near this property, correct?
Apparently not.
Okay. But they, you said they did remove vegetation?
I, I'm assuming that they removed it. I mean, who else would take trees down off a property? I mean, I don't know. So, I mean, it was a surprise to me, I didn't even realize they had been taken down.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody here to speak in favor of the public service use request? Anybody here to speak against? Seeing none? Public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion? Yes, we do have a motion. We should have two, one for the public service and one for the variance, correct?
I make a motion to approve the public service use.
Second?
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve the public service use and a second. Any discussion?
I guess I'll start since I made the motion. It, it seems like a logical area. It seems like there's not a significant impact to the community assists with the coverage. Pretty straightforward from my perspective.
I would, I would agree with that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Raise your right hand. Unanimous? Thank you very much. So we have a motion regarding the variance for the camouflage.
For camouflage or?
Well, we need a variance for the camouflage.
It's actually a height variance, isn't it? I, I think it's, I kind of went round and round, is this a camouflage variance?
It's a camouflage variance, yes.
The code actually says it calls it a height variance. It's kind of weird, but...
The camouflage is required for the additional height, so they're tied together. It's not a traditional variance in the sense that it's in the code itself, it's not a separate, it's height variances, as we have done before, design variances, as far as the way they refer to them in the code. It's actually in that section of the code. But since we've had multiple of these ones before, you know, I felt like the board probably wanted to see the options of either the monopole or the monopine and sort of decide which is the most camouflage to have the increase in height over the 150-foot requirement.
Right, so we're not asking for a variance for the height, but a variance for the camouflage because of the, it's required for the height.
Right.
Crystal clear.
I'll make a motion to grant a variance for the camouflage requirement. So it does not need to be camouflaged.
Second.
I just think, so we have a motion to grant the variance, not requiring camouflage. I just think with the transmission poles, and again, every day we're seeing these poles all around, you almost don't see them, but you see a pine tree that's sticking out 100 feet above all the other trees, it's just like, my gosh, what is that? I just think it's more obtrusive, you're more aware, and people see it.
Yeah, yeah. Not going to pay that regular tower any attention, but that thing there, I'm going to pay attention to, so.
The first one I saw going around Charlotte was like...
I could get on board with what Mr. Blair was saying, that maybe this one would be a little different, since it's got some woods around it, but then she kind of killed that idea when she told me they had taken some woods out around it, so. I think, like what you're saying, with the transmission tower there, I just think it makes sense.
Well, I'll just point out, they did, I think, six or seven simulations, and there's actually only one that you can see a transmission tower. So to make it, the argument to make it blend to the transmission tower, I don't think really holds water. Now, whether or not it looks just as good as a monopole or a monopine isn't indeed an argument, but the idea that it blends with the transmission tower, I don't think it holds water, because it's only from one perspective, one view, as well as, it's another 65 feet taller than those transmission towers also, so it's kind of prominent even when it's there. So I think in the other ones, the monopine would look better, but, you know, where I live, I'm going to see this thing once a year. To me, we have to make the decision, but in this case, I would have relied 100% on what the people around there that walk out on the front porch every morning, and there's a cellphone tower, what do you want that cellphone tower to look like? But there's no input.
Yeah.
So...
Right.
Kind of directionless here.
I agree with Mr. Blair.
Yeah.
I generally don't like the monopines. I think they look worse than the monopole, although the one photograph that was provided in this packet, actually, I think it's probably the one instance where the monopine could be an improvement. There's also another one that I saw recently, probably in the last week or two, that I hadn't even noticed that there was a cell tower there, and we were sitting at a light, and that's the light that I go through all the time. I looked up and went...
But if it was 180-foot pine tree, you would know.
No, 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 it was 180-foot pine tree.
It was a pine tree.
It was 180-foot pine tree, and it actually did what it was intended to do. I had never noticed the tower there.
How close were you?
Right across the intersection. It's at Gold Hill and 160, so it's, I mean, it can't be more than a couple hundred yards away. I was sitting at that intersection, I looked over and went, there's a tall pine tree in there. And I mean, when I focused on it, I saw it. But anyways, to get back to the point at hand, I'm kind of with you, Jeff. I would have liked to have input from somebody who said, you know, I'd rather see a monopine than a monopole, because I really don't have a dog in this hunt, and I also don't see where, I had the same observation, where there was only one photograph that showed a transmission tower in the same image, the rest of them were all...
There was another one, but it was way over, you couldn't, they weren't next to each other.
I mean, it would have been helpful to have both the monopole and the pine tree depicted in the same spot, and just for future.
Y'all want to defer this, so we can get all that?
No. No, I'm just...
At the end of the day, I mean, I think staff's recommendation is probably where I'm going, so, because I don't have any place else to hang my hat.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor of granting the variance for the camouflage? Raise your right hand. Unanimous? Thank you very much. We have, thank you. So executive session, is that called? On the agenda?
We're just adding that on as a matter of course. If there's nothing listed, we're not going to have executive session. There's nothing listed next to it.
So we don't need to go to executive session? Okay.
That's just a place for it, I guess.
All right. A motion to adjourn?
Make a motion. Oh, did you make a motion? Were you asking?
Asking.
Oh, I make a move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of adjourn? Unanimous?